...tonight for the City Council meeting and public hearing of Alpharetta City Council on June 26, 2023. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:30. And I'll note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for, except for Councilman Mitchell, who will not be able to join us this evening. As always, we begin with a pledge of allegiance. So if you're able, please stand and join us.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have a proclamation. And this is for 2023 National Recreation and Parks Month. So Mr. Rogers, if you and your team would be willing to join us, Councilman Hypes, if you'll join me as well, we'll do the reading of this proclamation. They're going to throw the gauntlet down, but... Okay. So, Judge Rogers, if you would like to say a few words, why don't you take this opportunity to do so and talk a little bit about the department?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Alpharetta Recreation Parks and Cultural Services Department is among the finest in the country. And I can say that because I've worked for about seven or eight of the departments around the state. And this is by far the best group that I've ever worked with. We've assembled a team that is laser-focused on bringing fun to the citizens of Alpharetta. And we talk about that all the time. We talk about it at every one of our meetings, and that's what we do. And I think we do a good job because we've put together a team, and that team is, again, laser-focused on fun.
I think you do a much better than pretty good job. Y'all do an incredible job. Councilman Hypes, anything?
Well, I just want to say it's been one of my great pleasures, serving on council, to be liaison to this department. And what makes it so great is this is where community comes together with all the activities, places, and events that we that we put on through recs, parks, and cultural events. So it's been a great pleasure, and let's keep it going.
Thanks, sir. You know, 10, 12 years ago, we used to hope that we would actually have events that would bring people to downtown Alpharetta. And because of the people we're celebrating here this month, we do. And it's incredible. And nobody gives them enough credit because it's impossible to give you enough credit for what you do on a daily basis. And we are grateful. And you do get a whole month of celebration. That doesn't mean you get to take any time off or anything, but you get to celebrate while you're at work. So this is a proclamation by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, 2023 Recreation, Parks, and Culture Month. Whereas recreation, parks, and cultural services not only adds to the quality of life of our residents, but are also an integral and essential part of the Alpharetta community. And whereas recreation, parks, and cultural services also promotes health and wellness and improves physical and mental health. And whereas recreation, parks, and cultural services provide safe, convenient, and fun park locations and natural outdoor areas throughout the city of Alpharetta. Some of the amenities include playgrounds, trails, tennis, and pickleball courts, the Equestrian Center, event facilities, classrooms, and outdoor art installments. And whereas the Alpharetta Department of Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Services offers a vast array of programs and services for citizens of Alpharetta, including but not limited to athletic arts, swimming, senior programs, agricultural programs, health and wellness, historical programming, adaptive programming, music, dance, and environmental programming. And whereas the Recreation, Parks, and Cultural Services team makes fun a priority for all citizens of Alpharetta. And whereas the City of Alpharetta is truly the best place to live, work, and especially play. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the awesome city of Alpharetta, do recognize and hereby proclaim the month of July as Recreation, Parks, and Culture Month in the City of Alpharetta, and encourage all citizens to visit our parks and enjoy all that the Alpharetta parks have to offer. So proclaim this 26th day of June 2023 by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate it. [applause] And that consists of the special called City Council Meeting Minutes from the meeting of June 19, 2023, at 11:30 a.m. Also, the City Council Meeting Minutes from the meeting of June 19, 2023, the alcoholic beverage licenses application, which is PH-23-AB-13, Alpharetta Revolving Sushi Factory, Inc., 865 North Main Street, Suite 108, Alpharetta, Georgia 30009, as well as the financial management report for the month ending April 30, 2023, and the right-of-way warranty deed for Cummings Street. Is there anyone on council who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak about this item, now is your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Councilman Brian Will, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. I will note for the record that the public hearing item that had been advertised was deferred by the applicant, and it's been deferred into the July 17, 2023 City Council meeting and public hearing. So if you're here for that item, you may have to come back on July 17. So we'll move on to the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and that begins with PH-23-08 UDC text amendment zoning procedures law. This is the second reading. The first reading occurred during the June 19 meeting. Ms. S. Wine, would you like to read the ordinance and explain anything about this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend the Unified Development Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend procedures to ensure consistency with the zoning procedures law, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. So this is the same draft that you considered at the last public or at the last meeting for public hearing, though you had two versions of it, an alternate, and this is the alternate, that being that zoning decision. So an actual zoning change, a conditional use permit, an associated variance, things like that, still have only 15 days minimum notice rather than increasing that to 30 days. And so this is that version of the draft, and you can approve it tonight.
Were there any substantial changes?
There were no changes to the draft at all. We just published the one that you directed, but no changes were made to it.
Great. Thank you. Any council questions that would like to be answered? Thank you. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd offer a motion tonight to approve the second reading of PH-23-08 UDC text amendment zoning procedures law as was read last week.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? Appreciate your efforts on this, Ms. S. Wine. All those in favor of the motion to approve as outlined by Ms. S. Wine, please raise your right hand. It does pass unanimously. Next item will be PH-23-09, which is the Alpharetta Design Review Board Ordinance and Design Guidelines Text Amendment, also a portion of the zoning procedures law. Ms. S. Wine, you have the floor.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend Division 2 of Article 2 of Chapter 36 of the Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to amend procedures to ensure consistency with the zoning procedures law, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide for an effective date, and for all other lawful purposes.
Thank you very much.
There have been no changes to the draft since last week.
And I appreciate that as well. Any other questions from council? Ms. S. Wine, any comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak, now is your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment on that item. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd offer a motion to approve PH-23-09 Alpharetta Design Review Board Ordinance and Design Guidelines Text Amendment zoning procedure law as presented tonight by Ms. S. Wine.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Hypes for the PH-23-09 item as outlined by the city attorney. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up is the resolution from the Fulton County Community Development Block Grant Program Cooperation Agreement. Ms. S. Wine, if you could go ahead and read the resolution aloud, so I don't forget to ask for it later, and then we'll allow Mr. Lagerblum to explain.
A resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of the cooperative agreement for Fulton County's Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lagerblum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mayor and council, this is an agreement that would continue Alpharetta in the same path it's been on with respect to CDBG funds and their allocation to the City of Alpharetta. We're not a direct recipient city, so the funds that we will be entitled to go through Fulton County. They, every three years, send us an agreement and ask us if they want us to or if we want them to continue to manage the CDBG program on our behalf, we'd make proposals for funds. My recommendation at this point is that we do, for the next three-year cycle, reenter into this agreement. We'll look at it over the three years. There is some possibility that we could manage this program ourselves. I don't think we're ready to do that yet. And there's really no harm in continuing doing this the way that we've always done it, at least over the last decade or so. So this resolution tonight just allows us to continue for '24, '25, and '26, the next three years.
Thanks, sir. Do any council members have questions? Councilman Binder.
This previously has been a pretty rubber-stamp idea, but then during the COVID time when we got federal funds, probably for another different kind of block grant, but we said, am I right that since we had Fulton running it, that affected our ratio for the funding on, I can't remember exactly which, it was more for housing?
I wasn't here to see, to know that, but my guess is it probably did, in probably certain specific areas. James, do you know more?
Yes, sir. So that, the way that operated, funds flowed from the state to the counties, and that was a state decision. The county then flowed funding to the municipalities. We elected to use those funds to pay for overtime expenses, and then that freed up dollars that we had used for overtime to...
The one where our amount changed, went from a lot to a little.
Correct. Correct. The county chose, under that scenario, the county chose to retain more for itself. That's a little different than the way the CDBG program operates. There's some federal requirements in place with that, that the county can't just do that.
Okay. So just want to make sure we've looked at our past things that happened to us. It wasn't our fault, but...
Okay. Any other questions from council? Thank you, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. James, we've got a little glitch in the system over there. Mics aren't turning on. There we go. All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a offer tonight to approve the resolution of Fulton County Community Development Block Grant Program Cooperation Agreement as presented this evening by the city attorney, Ms. S. Wine.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim and a second by Councilman Hypes, and that was to approve the resolution as read by city attorney Molly S. Wine. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Next item up is the request for proposal 23-118 United Towing Contract for Towing Services. Mr. Lagerblum?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm handling this on behalf of the chief tonight. I think it's a fairly straightforward presentation and decision to make. From time to time, we rebid our towing contract. Those are the towing trucks that show up when the police call for them on the side of the road for accidents or impounds or any of those services that are needed. We did do a competitive bid process. We had three respondents respond to the bid. The scoring is quite dramatic in its difference between high and low. The main thing that drove that is two of the companies that responded to the bid would suggest that the lots that they would maintain cars at were either 28 or 39 miles from the city of Alpharetta. One was within a reasonable driving distance and was also competitive on price. And therefore, our recommendation is that we make this award tonight to United Towing.
Thanks, sir. Any questions from Mr. Lagerblum? Councilman Will?
I wanted to point out something that you had pointed out to me, just for clarity for the public's sake. The fact that two of the three bidders were so far away actually was going to cause the citizens of Alpharetta to have to drive a significant distance if, in fact, we did tow them. So part of the process on our part was trying to make this more convenient, even though we're towing their car, at least they don't have to drive two hours to go get it. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this, now is your chance to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the award RFP 23-118 to United Towing, Inc., for five-year towing contract and authorize a mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Will, a second by Councilman Dorito, and that was to approve the request for proposal 23-118 as outlined in the motion by Councilman Will. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Next item up is request for proposal 23-109 Log Cabin Park Stormwater Mitigation Design Services. Director Sasevich, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you're in, it is the design services for the log cabin sites we're referring to it, and it's on the image screen right here. We own several acres along Milton Avenue, which we will then... Oh. Okay, sorry.
It's a Monet.
Okay, good. So the outline in red is a property that we own off of Milton Avenue. This was bought with, I believe it was bond money several years ago, and divvied up amongst several different initiatives. The log cabin is over there, and this project is going to take the log cabin site we're referring to as convert it more of a stormwater facility area. So we're looking at doing bio-retention, detention ponds, enhanced swales, everything to capture the water as much as we can before it funnels down into Full Killer Creek. And this is that tributary that ties into the areas behind the Meadowbrook subdivision. So we're trying to capture as much runoff before it even makes it down to that subdivision. We issued on proposals, we had five firms submit proposals, and the highest-rated firm, as well as the lowest-priced firm, was RKKK at $154,065. And we're looking at about 32 weeks to complete the work. That timeline will vary depending on how much we decide to impact into the buffers of the stream in that area. It will... And so the 32 weeks could turn into longer if the state has to be required to get the permitting. So, but our goal is to maximize as much detention as possible in this area.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Pro Tim?
Pete, I can stumble over words sometimes, but the performance of the log cabin park stormwater mitigation design service in an amount not to exceed $154,065, that's just design. That's not construction?
Correct. It's just design.
And was this contemplated back when we originally agreed to move the log cabin over there, or did that log cabin getting moved over there result in this, us needing to do this?
It's a...
Yes or no words?
The three parcels were bought, one with parkland money, one with transportation funds, and one with stormwater funds. So there was always to have a stormwater component to it. The removal of marginway from the city's cap improvement plan has opened up additional land, so we could actually do more work in that area.
Okay. Let's find a new name for it.
We can do that, sir.
Any other? Councilman Will?
I'm sorry, I'm way behind in this because I wasn't here when y'all did this, but we moved the log cabin, and now we have a water problem.
No, we don't have a water problem. What we're trying to do is the water, the stormwater challenges downstream of here have been going on for decades.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is we identify an area where we can capture runoff before it makes its way down to that subdivision that sees the overflow of Full Killer Creek out of its banks when it has some serious storm events.
And that would be whether or not we move the log cabin or not?
So the log cabin, when it got decided to move, so what we're trying to do is solve detained water upstream before it makes its way downstream. And one of the...
Got that. I guess maybe I'm confused with the nomenclature here. We keep talking about this log cabin as if the log cabin is the problem that caused the stormwater mitigation issue.
No. It is not the problem that caused it.
This is a completely separate issue.
It's just, if I just admit, we just used the log cabin site as a nomenclature for a identification marker.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify a little bit, so this was probably seven years, eight years ago at least.
Yes.
It's been quite some time. We acquired that property for several different reasons. One was there was a connection projected between Milton Avenue and through that marginway quarter that we decided not to construct. There was also the intention, if we were doing all of that, to make it a park and also have some stormwater facility that would be required by the road. Eventually, the city, this council, decided not to put through that road because the homes had already been built there, and it would have been disruptive to their neighborhood as well, and make it a park. And at that point, since Fulton County Schools was not going to allow the old log cabin on the new school property, it became an easy location to move it just across the street. Now we're facing the issue of the stormwater that's downstream, although it's behind the Milton property, and it just, that's why it all came together in this proposal.
So the end result of doing this is going to be what?
The end result is to bid out to construct a stormwater facility to capture runoff before it makes its way downstream, so there's less of an impact downstream.
And the less of an impact means what?
Less, I don't want to say there'll be less flooding, but the storm, there'll be less runoff going downstream, therefore hopefully it takes longer for Full Killer to come out of its banks in a larger storm event.
So I guess I'm going to continue with this train of thought here then. When we say hopefully, and it might, it seems like we're spending a lot of money to do something that hopefully might work and might not.
You will have rain events if this is built or this is not built, where Full Killer Creek comes out of its banks and the people's backyards do flood. The hope is that instead of flooding at elevation, just for nomenclature, at elevation 100, that that occurs, it takes longer for it to get to elevation 100. It's not going to take place in a normal storm event.
And what's the overall project cost to build this, not just the design?
The initial estimate is coming in over a million dollars.
And do we have the money set aside for that?
Yes, sir.
And this $154,000 was set aside as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I need. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Pete, I know you're trying to be truthful, but the fact is, it will reduce the runoff.
Yes.
I mean, so, I know, and I understand, hope and prayer are not a great planning strategy. But the fact is, we hope that it'll reduce some of those high-end 100-year events or something like that. But the fact is, it will slow runoff from that quarter regardless. Fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Any other questions? Councilman Binder, and then Councilman Dorito?
To follow up on Councilmember Will's, we have the money and it's earmarked?
So we have...
For the construction? Because I, we have, we have a pot, and I know there's a lot of needs and wants, so...
There is the pot of the money for the stormwater funds.
Correct.
That we'll have even more come July 1st.
Yep.
And so that, this project was identified through the 10-year CIP where we were coming through. So it's allocated, it's in our list of projects.
Isn't that CIP plan that's 14 million?
No, this is part of the stormwater program where we figured out that we needed $4 million a year over the next 10 years.
Yep.
This is one of those projects listed to come up with that calculation. So we do have the funds available in the stormwater fund for both design and construction.
So if we were to take it out for that, this project, it would take a act of council? If you were not to use the funds for this project construction, you'd have to come back to council?
I still have to come back before the council.
To approve it or to take it away?
To approve it for construction. So you're approving the funds for design tonight that will be pulled out of the stormwater fund. And then when we go out to bid and the bids come in, we'll come back in front of you guys again to approve the funds that come out of the same stormwater fund for construction.
Okay. It's a little bit, having it earmarked for that construction project, even though you don't know it, is different than saying we have a pool of funds.
We do, and we...
Or lots of projects.
Yeah, and we're budgeting our future projects to handle, just make sure that we have the funds for this project.
Okay.
We're not going to design something and then not build it. We're going to set the funds aside and make sure we don't spend more funds than we need to.
Councilman Dorito?
Thank you, Mayor. Pete, just for the benefit of the council, I think many of them probably are aware of this. I know you and James have worked really hard on the stormwater management plan for this area of the city. It's an older part of Alpharetta.
It is experiencing flooding, particularly a dead, what, 100-year flood back in September, I think? Or whatever it was? Which kind of exacerbated the problem, actually brought more attention to the city council appropriating the funds in the budget for increased monies for stormwater management and maintenance. This is part of that overall plan that we've discussed with the residents, correct?
This, yes, we discussed when we had the first couple meetings with them that we were looking at other areas upstream to capture as much runoff as possible.
And from what I recollect from our meetings with the residents and in discussion with city staff and the meetings we've had about stormwater management, this is one of the areas that we felt if we could mitigate the flow of water from this area, it would be one part of the solution to help mitigate the flooding of the Meadowbrook area and that area, the old part of Alpharetta, which is also being exacerbated by the larger homes being built there. And I know we've done some changes, thanks to Director Cook, as far as trying to, you know, enforce some greater zoning requirements to help mitigate flooding from that perspective on new development as well. So I just want the council to be aware that this is part of a bigger plan that I think we're, shortly you're going to share with the mayor and city council from our last meeting.
Yep, we're getting ready.
So they can see all the pieces of the puzzles coming together for addressing this area.
There's most definitely no silver bullet for this area. So, and the area is an older community that has no detention ponds at all in it. So we're trying to capture as much runoff as we can and serve as an upstream detention pond to mitigate downstream issues.
Thank you, Pete.
You may, Councilman Will.
Pete, why did you choose this project to be at the top of the list?
So I want to consider it's the top of the list. Initially, the Meadowbrook subdivision was the top of the list. And we are going through the right-of-way easement, more of the easement acquisition phase. This is one of those where coming in $150,000, which is a lot of money, we have another bite at the apple to help solve that problem in that area. There's all these little pieces of the puzzle going through it. We studied this area, we also studied, looking at putting a underground detention system underneath the STEM Academy's football field and replacing it with artificial turf, I'm working with Morgan, and we analyzed that area. Doing that plus this was a tremendous benefit, but the dollar amount was extremely high for that benefit. So this was the best alternative, paying for the buck, if you want to put it that way.
It, it strikes me. Were. Yes, we had a problem with stormwater issues, but we also had a lot of issues that were specific to the individual properties that were flooding. Sunken yards, sinkholes, blocked lines. And my concern would be that if we're putting this out there as an opportunity to fix a lot of these issues and the homeowners themselves don't fix their own personal issues, that they're just going to come back and say, either you didn't do anything or it's not helping me. And we're still in the same boat that we're in today, which is somebody's yard's flooding because they've got a big sinkhole in their darn front yard and the pipe that's supposed to go through to the sewer is plugged, right? So we're spending money to do something that isn't going to have the effect that maybe we think it is because it's not really all of the problem. Is there any fairness to what I just said?
I would say that we are going to help mitigate some of the challenges they see, especially in the minor storm events, where the water was coming a little higher up than they would like to have in a two-year storm compared, this will help solve those issues there. We're not stopping our preventive maintenance program where we're going out, doing the inspections, cataloging where there are clogged pipes, and if there's a clogged pipe and it's a urgent matter, we are unclogging that pipe through our on-call contracts. So this is just another piece that we're utilizing of our toolkit. So we're going to keep doing what we've been doing with preventive maintenance and clearing out storm drains and doing everything we can, fixing and lining new pipes and replacing pipes and structures. This is just another part of the puzzle, if you want to say. I wish there was a silver bullet to this area, there isn't. So we're just doing little pieces to help improve the quality of life downstream.
All right.
Councilman Dorito?
Just to follow up on Councilman Will's comments. As part of the plan, again, that will be coming to city council for consideration, we have looked at, obviously the anti-tuity clause of state constitution does not allow the city to do improvements on private property. But where there are issues that Councilman Will's pointing out with some of the homeowners there, we are looking at potential grant opportunities and I hope I'm classifying it right, or different options for the homeowners to be able to get some relief or period of time to make some of those improvements on their own property as part of the overall stormwater management plan for this area of the city. So I wanted to point that out because you raised a great question. The other thing is, I know, Pete, you're in active discussions with Fulton County as far as curb and gutter and things that don't exist in this area of the city that is also contributing to the, to the stormwater flow. That makes it even a more difficult thing because it's flooding properties and there's nowhere, the water's not being directed into the system to, to remove it properly, not build up on the properties. You could explain a bit, and I can as an engineer, but.
So the challenges downstream is there's no curb and gutter. However, the, by installing curb and gutter downstream, that means we have to detain the water in the pipe, underground pipes, because we don't want the water to reach downstream quicker. So all these little measures are a challenge. We're looking at easements in this area, we're looking at different opportunities in the Meadowbrook, and even upstream of Meadowbrook, the other direction north. There are some parcels, there are some detention ponds that we are looking at trying to figure out how we can partner with the homeowners in that area on a private parcel to improve the detention in that area. So it's, it's all coming together slowly, but there's always, there's options down the road.
Septic tanks, old septic tanks are contributing to the problem, as well as from what I recall, Full Killer Creek itself, we're not allowed to touch it and so-called clean it up to improve the flow of the stream so that, you know, it doesn't build up in that area. There's a lot of different things that are causing the problem there that your department, along with James, have been very active with you on trying to address and put together a plan that over a period of time to try to help mitigate the problems we see in part of the city.
Yes, and unfortunately Full Killer is all on private property. So it's, makes it that much more challenging.
Any other question? Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward, now is your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve and award RFP 23 dash 109 to Remmel, Klepper, and Kyle LLP for the performance of the Log Cabin Park Stormwater Mitigation Design Service in the amount not to exceed $154,065 and to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, and that was to approve the request for proposal two three dash one zero nine, Log Cabin Park Stormwater Mitigation Design Services as outlined in the motion. Any discussion? Councilman Binder?
Pete, I just want to thank you for everything that y'all have been doing and the staff as a whole trying to communicate. I like how you're attacking the different areas. I know we've, we've put, set aside, I don't know, three to four million a year, four, and we act like it's a lot, but it's a drop in the bucket, you know? Hate to say it for this kind of thing, so I would hate for us, which I've seen in the past, rely that we have plans and say we got a plan and, you know, say that to me when we overextend ourselves on plans and not enough money on execution. So that's my biggest concern, it's been my concern for a while on a lot of projects that we've approved on this council. So you let us know if you need more on that, that kind of funds. I, I don't think four million's a lot, and I think we need to start looking at bigger solutions.
Councilman Hypes?
I'd like to echo Councilman Binder down there and also say that, you know, we've heard the residents and we're responding to what the residents have asked us to do. We've got a fixed size of a pie for a budget that we have to balance, and we establish those priorities. And I, for one, am proud of what our council has done to do $4 million a year versus applying that elsewhere. I took the opportunity to look back in our 2010 budget long before I was on council. And back then, the city devoted $175,000 a year to stormwater maintenance. So I, I think that we have recognized what our obligations are to the residents. You've done an outstanding job of prioritizing, much like you do with the milling and resurfacing. And I've always been guided by your expertise on bringing us what the priorities are, and I recognize this is one of them. And, you know, appreciate what you're doing, appreciate what council has done in terms of, you know, making that stormwater maintenance a priority. Because that's, that's, that's a big number in our, in our budget, so.
Any other comments? Grateful for your work on it, Pete. I know it's a complex situation and there are no easy or cheap answers. And so this is one thing that we do control the property and although it's not cheap, it's one of the more inexpensive options based on the other costs, especially when it comes to acquiring private property and making improvements through those areas. So it's a good first step, I appreciate your efforts. That being said, all those in favor of approving the motion as outlined, please raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you, sir. So that wraps up the new business portion of tonight's meeting. We do have a portion reserved for public comment if anyone would like to come forward. Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
I've not received any comment cards, sir, Mayor.
And I don't see anyone coming forward at this time, so we'll close public comment. Reports? Councilman Hypes?
Every, prior to every council meeting, we get a list of upcoming events for the Department of Fun, and there are so many events that are happening. It's all topical as opposed to specific in terms of outdoor concerts, health and wellness events, farmer's market, which is just going gangbusters on Saturday, horse shows at Will's Park. But I want to highlight a couple, and that is Food Truck Alley has been rescheduled to tomorrow night because of a rain out last week, so for those of you, what's that? Thursday night, I missed both, Thursday, thank you. And if you show up tomorrow night, there won't be any food trucks, so. So Thursday will be Food Truck Alley, and then a week from tomorrow, 4th of July, the city's 4th of July fireworks show at Will's Park, which is always a great event. So hats off to the Department of Fun for putting on these classy events and bringing our community together.
Mayor Pro Tim Merkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's for, it's kind of a hybrid, it crosses multiple departments. But I went out this morning and watched the start of the week of I Can Bike, a program that I remember being on Public Safety Foundation Board of Directors, and we approved the funds to start that before I got on council, it's been quite a while. And to see how it's evolved, to see three of my neighbors, three people from my neighborhood out there volunteering, all looking at me saying, you were right, it's a lot of work. So to watch these guys run and chase these kids around is amazing, and I do want to thank Parks and Public Safety, and everybody's had a hand in it, and it's another great program for this week.
Any other reports? I believe we do have an executive session this evening.
Actually, I'm going to, after some conversations with members of council prior to the meeting, I think it's most appropriate that I just hold that until the 17th, along with, are already known to have executive session probably from the city attorney. So we don't need one tonight, but we will with certainty have one on the 17th.
All right, sir. I know everybody on council is crushed that we don't have an executive session this evening. So with that being done, all business taken care of, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.